We'll call the county board for session 2G, May 22nd, 2014. And rise to the left, Louie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan Ossedt.
Here.
Charles Brand.
Here.
John Burr.
Here.
Roy Engelbert.
Here.
David Innegil.
Here.
Ken Fisher.
Here.
Joel Gunlickson.
Here.
Richard Haynes.
Here.
Randy Halsted.
Here.
John Cook.
Here.
Susan Kohout.
Here.
David Lino.
Here.
Ben Meyer.
Here.
Mark Miller.
Here.
John Ninus.
Here.
Tim O'Connor.
Here.
Holly Runquist.
Here.
Kathy Schultz.
Here.
Don Cuddy.
Here.
Richard Verley.
Here.
Leo Zipper.
Here.
Okay, all 21 present, motion to present the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mark Miller, seconded by.
Second.
And.
Sure.
Is that working? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. In correspondence, there's a letter from the WCA in your packet, actually a memo from WCA, and a letter from Linda Myers congratulating the county in their good effort, and also the unassigned fund balance is in your packet.
One more.
Say what?
One more.
What is it?
At your places, there's celebrating National Tourism Week, as you can see. The Visitors Bureau featured a proclamation that was approved by the Door County Board of Supervisors regarding tourism. They'd like to say thank you for that proclamation. This went out to every household in Door County.
I also got a letter from the DNR about 10 acres in the village of Ephraim and 40 acres in the town of Sturgeon Bay for a Noel Nelson stewardship program, and we have, I got this Friday, so we couldn't get it on the agenda. I have no idea where the land is or what it is about, but we have 30 days to either accept or reject the thing with the DNR, so if anybody's got any knowledge on it, please let us know. If not, we'll go to public comment. Anybody in the public want to make a comment? One more time, anybody in the public want to make any comment? Nobody wants to, so we'll move on to the Administrator's Monthly Report.
Yes, in your packets, you have a copy of the May Monthly Report. I think the most prominent item in here is the mission team update. As you know, with the implementation of Act 10 on December 31st, 2013, we moved from a largely represented to a minimally represented workforce. In order to help us with the potential morale issues that might come with that magnitude of a change, we put together a mission team. The mission team has met several times over the past few months, and as we are sitting here today, they are surveying our employee as to the workplace climate in Door County. They've done an absolutely heroic job in getting this together and meeting, and they are very unified, so I'd like to take a moment or two and thank Rob Burke from the UW Extension Office. He put the survey together, and he's the one who's receiving it, and he'll tally the results of the survey. And under his guidance, Sally Bowden, Joanne Baumann, Greg Colthirst, Diane Franklin, Jake Erickson, Kelly Hendy, Amy Jean Quart, Becky Kerwin, John Kaloge, Duane Coontz, Erin Leclerc, Beth Miller, Sarah Nye, Amy Neville, Bob Schaefer, John White, and Kathy White have formulated what is turning out to be an excellent survey of our workforce. I'd like to thank them personally for their efforts, and please, if you see any of them, thank them for this good work. In addition to the team members, they've been staffed by Lori Holtz, and as I mentioned, the UW Extension Office has graciously allowed Rob Burke to work on this project. There are some other items within. The monthly report about external relations, there were a couple of columns that were written, one featuring our planning department, another featuring our soil and water department, and they relate back to the 2010 mission statement, vision, strategic priorities. Those departments are doing an excellent job following the guidance that you provided in the adoption of that mission vision and strategic priorities. And then finally, I had the pleasure of appearing on Eddie Allen's show. I spelt his name wrong in the monthly report, I apologize to Eddie. He's E-D-D-Y, not the way I spelt it, and beginning on June 20th, we'll be featuring Door County departments on his program, so a thank you to Eddie. That's what I have today for the monthly report. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the resolutions, and our first resolution is in memory of James Knutson. Susan, can you read that? I forgot to tell you ahead of time, but I think you're the person that is.
Ten minutes.
What? Oh, minutes, oh, excuse me. Motion to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2014.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Kathy, seconded by Don Cuddy. Is there any corrections or additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. I crossed it out again, then, huh?
Yeah.
Susan, could you read James Knutson's?
Okay. "In memoriam James O'Knutson." Whereas James O'Knutson passed away on May 3rd, 2014, and whereas Supervisor Knutson was appointed to the Door County Board of Supervisors in May 1967, and duly elected to the Door County Board of Supervisors in April 1968, and was re-elected in April 1970, 1972, and 1974, serving through 1976 for a total of nine years, and whereas Supervisor Knutson represented Supervisory District 4, including the town of Gardner and the town of Nassauapi, and whereas Supervisor Knutson served on several committees, including Ag and Education, Legislative Property, Highway, Executive and Personnel, Solid Waste Action Committee, Ad-Hoc Corner Marketing Committee, Door County Hospital Board, and whereas Supervisor Knutson served as chairperson of the Highway Committee and Ad-Hoc Corner Marketing Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session this 27th day of May, 2014, extend our sincere sympathy to James Knutson's family with this acknowledgement of his dedication to the citizens of the county of Door.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I move that we pass that resolution.
Is there a second? Second. Seconded by John Cook. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. The appointment of Director of Door County Buildings and Grounds is next. That appointment is by Maureen. Would someone like to make a motion to approve it, and then we'll explain.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Don Cuddy. Would you like to introduce them?
Absolutely. Wayne?
Here.
Wayne, if you would come to the microphone. And while Wayne is making his way to the microphone, it is absolutely my pleasure to present to you for confirmation today, Wayne Spreitka. Wayne has over 20 years of U.S. Coast Guard experience here, primarily in Sturgeon Bay. He's had eight consecutive years in leadership in three high-profile command positions. He's well-versed in physical plant and physical plant security, operations, and facilities management. He's been the project manager of six major construction projects and in excess of $4.6 million. He has a proven track record of working cooperatively, and I'm hopeful that he will do as good of a job for us in Door County as he has for the U.S. Coast Guard.
Okay. Wayne, you want to say a few words, or let's take a vote first to see?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to approve him. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead, Wayne, say something.
Well, as Maureen said, we're going to be retiring and our families staying here, so we're delighted and very grateful for this opportunity, and I hope to serve all of you and Door County in the many years to come, Kelly, as we have talked about, hopefully 20-plus. We're hoping to stay here pretty much for the rest of our lives. We have four kids in the school system, and our youngest is five, so we have a long way to go, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Circuit Court transfer of non-budgeted funds, replacement upgrade in audiovisual system. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-36, which is an additional transfer of non-budgeted funds to replace and upgrade our audiovisual system at the Circuit Court.
You're second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Holly.
If you recall, about a year ago this month, we, the county board, approved a $2,000 transfer of funds to upgrade the audiovisual system in the Circuit Court, and after we went up for bids and received our bids back as a result, the RFP through IS, it was considerably higher than what we had thought it was, and so we were asking for additional, up to $150,000 to complete the project as it was presented last year, and it would come out of the unassigned fund balance. I know that Jennifer Mueller is here, I know that Tim is here, and I know the two judges are here, and the sheriff is here to speak on this also, if you would like any further explanation.
Well, we can ask, are there any questions that might come up? Has anybody got any questions about it, or anybody want to speak on it? Judges, would you like to say anything, or silence is golden, maybe? I don't know.
Well, yeah, maybe I should keep them all shut. The only thing I would add, as I think all of you are aware, we had a fairly high-profile trial within the last month, and I know at some point there was some discussion about maybe just upgrading one of the courtrooms versus upgrading both of them. Well, during that trial, I mean, virtually every day for the majority of that trial, some sort of audiovisual equipment was being used in my courtroom, which meant Judge Dilts, who was conducting bail hearings and whatever else was on his calendar, as I said, I know there was a discussion about maybe just doing one and us going back and forth, but for that circumstance, I mean, either the trial would have waited, or we would have had problems with utilizing the audiovisual equipment at Judge Dilts's courtroom, so... But, yeah, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. We realize this is a significant expenditure for the county, but the equipment is going on eight, nine years old, and we feel it needs to be upgraded, so.
Has anybody got any questions?
Just two of the courtrooms?
Two of the courtrooms, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The third, now.
Correct. Anybody got any questions?
Is this going to happen every nine or 10 years?
As technology goes, how do we know? I would say maybe.
Probably.
Tim would have a better idea than I think. Yes.
Don?
I support this 100%. I would just like to say that, to comment that I think anything that we can do to keep our citizens 100% safe, or try to keep our citizens 100% safe, we should do.
Anybody else got any questions, or if not, we're going to go to, actually, a roll call vote, and don't forget to roll through.
To roll through? All right.
Charles Brand.
Yes.
John Burr.
Yes.
Roy Engelbert.
Yes.
David Innegil.
Yes.
Ken Fisher.
Yes.
Joel Gunlickson.
Yes.
Richard Haynes.
Yes.
Randy Halsted.
Yes.
John Cook.
Yes.
Susan Kohout.
Yes.
David Lino.
Yes.
Ben Meyer.
Yes.
Mark Miller.
Yes.
John Ninus.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Holly Runquist.
Yes.
Kathy Schultz.
Yes.
Don Cuddy.
Yes.
Richard Verley.
Yes.
Leo Zipper.
No.
And Dan Ossedt.
Yes.
All right.
So that has passed on a vote of 20 yes and one no. Next item is the appointment of committees, commissions, and boards. And Maureen, correct?
Yes. Before you, you have Resolution 2014-37. There's new appointments. Where there was new appointments, we've included a brief bio. So we have an appointment to ADRC, Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission, as you can see, it's Supervisor Fisher, with a couple of alternates that will serve. We did that in order of seniority. Wisconsin Development Fund Loan Review Committee is a new appointment. The CCS Coordinating Committee, Local Emergency Planning Committee is listed, and as I said, if there are new appointments, a bio, a brief bio was included.
Okay, is there?
That's it.
Is there a motion to approve? Someone, Don Cuddy, make a motion, a second, by.
I'll second.
By David Innegil. Are there any questions?
That's a lot of committees.
Yes, yes, it is. Go ahead, Leo.
To the membership, is there a requirement that they live in Door County?
Yes.
I see we have a gentleman for appointment that lives on the first house south of the county line in the town, or Iwannie County.
For which one?
Peter Devlin.
Local Emergency Planning Commission? Dan assisted me with those.
I think it's close enough. He's the first media representative we've had on this committee in a very long time.
Got it.
Grant, could you, is that okay?
The media I work for. I would need to look at the statute that authorizes local emergency planning committee. I'd say leave it as is. If there's an issue, we can address it.
There you go.
Did everybody hear that?
He spends half his time up here, anyway.
Correct.
Right. I do see him at more meetings.
Grant, go look into it, leave it the way it is right now. If there's an issue, we'll bring it back. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed unanimously. The collective bargaining agreement is between the telecommunications. Leo, you want to make a motion and explain it?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-38.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I'll refer to Grant to explain.
Turn to Grant to explain.
Well, what you will notice that since Act 10 and 32, the collective bargaining agreements for general municipal employees have gotten significantly shorter. This is our first collective bargaining agreement that we've negotiated with a bargaining unit made up entirely of general municipal employees. This bargaining unit is comprised of our telecommunications, who used to be in the collective bargaining agreement with the deputy sheriffs, but after Act 10 and Act 32, you are not allowed to have a collective bargaining unit comprised of both public safety and general municipal employees. The sum and substance of the collective bargaining agreement involves total base wages, and what we have negotiated is the implementation of the allowable increase under the statutes, which for this 12-month period is 1.66%. That increase will be applied across the board evenly, except for the telecommunications supervisor position, because that position, within the confines of our wage study, the incumbent's wages fall above the maximum 115%, so the incumbent will be redlined. I don't know if there's any questions. It's relatively straightforward. In terms of the fiscal impact, Shirley, in her infinite wisdom, budgeted the 1.66% increase, and that budgeted amount pretty much covers the collective bargaining agreement. It dates back to January 1.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions?
We have a problem when Grant says, "I'll be brief."
Yeah. He was pretty good.
It's in relative terms, attorney brief.
Attorney brief, that was. Good, good. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed, you didn't. Next item is the gift of a vehicle to Door County. Charles Brand, you want to make a motion, and we'll second, and then you can tell everybody what.
I'm back here.
Yeah, I'm looking there where you were last time. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-39, approval of the Wisconsin 1033 program transfer of Cayman Six-by-Six MRAP to the Door County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kathy. The sheriff is behind you, you want to have him talk, or you want to speak on?
Well, let him.
Let him go. You've come all the way up here if you want to.
Can we take it to WCA? Thanks, Dan. I do have a little bit of PowerPoint, just to kind of answer a lot of the questions that people have asked me about, kind of explains a little more of what we're about here. And basically, the bottom line, this vehicle is about safety for our citizens, law enforcement officers, countywide. I do want to thank Chief Porter and many of our SWAT team members that are here today, along with the spouse of one of the SWAT team members. This is a very serious issue for us, and it's really about the safety of our community and our officers. The MRAP, that's what it's commonly called, there's different varieties that they come with, different sizes and things like that. This is very similar size to what we received last Friday. You see the back end of it there, where we will do a different configuration as far as seating arrangements inside, but you can mold it to whichever way the office wishes. The vehicle came from Sealy, Texas. Basically, it's a military surplus vehicle made available through the Department of the Defense, federal government. They purchased a whole slew of these, as you see, and thousands of them are sitting idle right now, being made available to law enforcement agencies around the country. State of Wisconsin became eligible for some of these, and we were one of the agencies that applied. The prior use, we don't know what the prior use of this particular vehicle was. You'll note in Air Lake Appleton PD that received one, theirs was an ambulance. We're not certain what ours was used for. We were told that Cayman MTV about that area, I think some of that is a little bit of government inflation, to be quite frank about it, but that's what the government assessed the cost of that vehicle at. We have used this program, and I know the sheriff prior to me has used this program extensively. We've got a number of items from there at virtually no cost. We continue to basically shop online. We go on there and see what is available through the 1033 program, and if it's something that we can use, you know, we check it out a little bit further and take it. All agencies statewide are, I believe it's out of Waukesha, are online and doing the same thing we're doing, basically shopping for any free military type of equipment. It's just, you know, if we don't want it anymore, just to make it clear, this is not a grant, this is basically a loan. It's a loan to law enforcement for its use. And basically, I don't want to read what's up there, but if we no longer want it, the vehicle will go back to the Department of the Defense. Transportation's costs would go to the receiving agency. If there's no agency that wants it, we would take care of the processing to pay for it, basically, to go to the scrapyard. We did have to pay for the cost of transport on that vehicle through Raw Transport Service, and basically, that's pretty much what they do right now. Raw Transport is a bigger equipment type of a transport company. There are several of them out there. We did look around, got the best cost. As he was down there picking up our vehicle, another agency was Jefferson County from Wisconsin, was down there picking up theirs. There is some training needed on this vehicle. Now, we're fortunate, we've got Eric Pyle, one of our reserve officers from Bailey's Harbor. That's what he did in the military. He drove that, he maintained it. He actually came here when they brought it, unloaded it, gave us some brief instructions on how to operate it, but we will need more instruction on it, and that will get through Eric, along with Brown County Sheriff's Office. Primarily, what we're going to be using this thing for is the ingress and egress in a zone where gunfire is occurring, or is anticipated, or is possible, to be quite frank about it. Can be used at any time when any type of an incident is underway, armed subjects, barricaded subjects, hostage situations, active shooters, searches for armed suspects, high-risk stops, SWAT search warrants, depending on the situation. We can use it for flooding type of situations. We can use it at school shootings. We can use it, it's available for disaster types of situations. I remember back about eight years ago, I was up here talking about a very similar type of a situation with an incident command vehicle. At that point, we were given a gift by Judith Blasier for an incident command vehicle. I remember some people saying, "Well, you'll never use it up here in Door County." Weeks later, two of us, basically on a national stage, two of us in this room sat in there for 10 days, working that situation out there, and I think Door County came out of it very good, even though, despite the fact of two wonderful people died. That incident command vehicle helped us through that situation, and we continue to use it to this day. Basically, it's got two forward seats, eight in the rear, although, as I stated earlier, you can reconfigure it any way you wish, and we will be reconfiguring it. I'm not certain what we're going to be putting, either bench seats in there, or just individual passenger seats, but you can fit a lot of people in there, depending on how you want to construct it. Other agencies in Wisconsin, last fall, these three agencies here received one. Then in April, these following agencies, they were eligible to receive one. And then this past May, these agencies here received them. As you can see, Jefferson County is on there, they're picking theirs up the same hour we were picking ours up. You know, I guess, you know, some people say, "Well, you're not going to use it," very similar to the incident command vehicle, but we are going to be using it, and I would have used it twice already this year. You know, as a sheriff, I'm, I look out for the safety of each and every one of our guys out there, and I know some of these SWAT calls that go on. In fact, I have to sign off on these SWAT calls before the SWAT team is utilized out there. These are two examples where I know I would have used the incident command vehicle, because as I'm trailing these SWAT guys down that long driveway, wide open, I know there's high-powered rifles in that house, I know people, for instance, on that county T1, that gentleman has the potential to go into prison for many, many years. He, in all likelihood, knew what we were coming, but didn't know when, so he had time to prepare for us. Believe me, that gets you thinking, as those guys are going down that driveway, and for me to do not, for me to do everything possible to keep these guys safe is what we need to If we pass on this opportunity, they don't anticipate any more coming to Wisconsin. They want to close down that Sealy, Texas lot. I talked to the delivery guy on Friday, I said, "Well, how many are down there yet?" He says, "There's a few," but he said every time he goes, there's less and less, and he says, "There's not many left there right now." But there is some down there. If you actually looked at the Google map from last year, the lot was just full of them. They're dispersed kind of around the nation. You know, some of the people that have brought up, you know, "You're never going to use it," or "It's not important," that we're in Door County. You know, as in school safety, which really, right now, is a big deal, the biggest mistake out there is for people to think that this can never happen here. It does happen here. It can happen anywhere in the United States. We spend a lot of money on officer safety. You know, it's mandatory they wear the bulletproof vest, the armored vest, on a daily basis. We train hundreds of hours on safety, on numerous type of tactical trainings against armed criminals. You know, I hope we never get to use some of that tactical armor, and I hope nobody ever gets shot. But preparing to fail, our failing to prepare is preparing to fail, and that's what we do here. And if the incident does happen, and we're not ready, you know, who are they going to be pointing that, but all of us out here? So we need to do everything possible to do that. It might sound a little corny for some of you guys, but, you know, I myself, every night I go to bed, since I've been elected sheriff, have said a prayer for the safety of these About 10 years ago, Wisconsin got armored vehicles, we got seven of them around the state, and they moved them around a little bit regionally to get them more utilized in certain regions. To this day, five of them have taken hits with high-powered rifles, five of the seven. So I'll open up to any questions you may have on this vehicle, and. So I'll open up to any questions you may have on this vehicle, and...
Kerry?
Go ahead.
I wonder if you could project for us any other costs, like you talked about training. Is there a projected cost with the training and maintenance? And then along with that, because you're taking the money out of the maintenance fund, is that going to...
The training, a lot of the training, our SWAT team trains monthly, and they're going to divert some of their training into this vehicle here. You know, I mean, we're going to start off with the basics on the training, just getting in and out of the vehicle, which is, you know, a safety deal, and we'll get into different maneuvers. Probably the furthest we're going to bring the vehicle is down to our firearms range. We're going to do some training down there. As far as the operation, as far as maintenance of the vehicle, we talked with the Door County Highway Shop. They've got the personnel that should be able to maintain pretty much everything that's on there, along with, there is some warranties on some of the items on there yet that we can, we can take care of on the, but much of the items in there is brand new. They got them all running tip-top shape. We kind of went over it when they brought it, and it looks like it, looks like it's a good vehicle. Who else had a question?
I was going to ask you about the maintenance. Usually, when the government turns those over, they replace everything that's broken with brand-new equipment in there. You really end up getting an almost new vehicle when it comes out of that program.
Yep, and that's what it is. It's, you'll actually, if you look closely, you'll see some of the parts that they did replace or repair, brand-new parts. It looks and runs like a brand-new vehicle.
And if I may, I would also like to add, being retired from the sheriff's department and the first SWAT team commander that the sheriff's department's had, it does happen in Door County. We have had SWAT team calls where we have been shot at. You know, the one I'm thinking of is off of Riley's Bay Road. I won't mention any names, but our officers were pinned down hiding behind a barn. Leften was discharged by the suspect at the time, and something like this is definitely a lifesaver.
Thank you, John.
We got to build new facilities to store this vehicle?
No, this vehicle will be stored in back of the Justice Center outside. During the winter months, we'll have a heated type of a situation where we can heat the engine, so we'll be ready to go on it. No new storage grudges or facilities needed on this vehicle.
Kerry, at law enforcement, you had mentioned that you were going to get an extra supply of tires or whatever with the vehicle.
Yeah, we have six new tires down at Wanakee for the vehicle, in case we do get a tire shot out or something, at no cost. We do have to probably get a truck to get them up here, but we will have six, basically brand-new tires is what's on them now, and those will be coming up here also. John?
Also, on Law Enforcement Committee, you had stated that you might be painting it. Have you come up with a nice navy blue color?
We have not got that far into it yet. We would like to, you know, put a coat of paint over it, along with the Door County Sheriff's Office name on that vehicle, but we haven't got to that point yet. There's not an urgency on that, and I'd like to, you know, start working on getting that taken care of. But you want the township of Bailey's Harbor on it too, that right away?
Paint it orange and put a plow on it and bang up the highway.
Is there any other questions at all?
We don't have to buy that great.
Thank you.
Being there are no more questions, we will take a vote on it. All in favor of accepting this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed unanimously. Next item is the Finance Committee. David, roads, bridges, et cetera, if you want to make a motion and get a second and explain it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. We approve Resolution 2014-40, which is County Roads and Bridges Fund Transfer of Non-Budgeted Funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead and explain.
In accordance with a county board resolution passed in 2005, every year at the end of the snow removal season, we take a look at what was budgeted for snow removal, and we either add to that fund, which is the County Roads and Bridges Fund, or if we had excess budgeted, where we didn't have as much snow, it was then transferred into the unassigned fund balance. As everyone knows, who was here this winter, it was quite a winter for snow removal, and as a result, we went four hundred and, sorry, 13, $413,010 over our budget amount. So we're asking that we reimburse the County Roads and Bridges Fund in that amount, and that's what this resolution asked for.
Okay, are there any questions? If, Leo?
Being on both committees, highways and finance, I'm totally confused. And I, if someone can help me through this, I'm wondering why we're going back to and referring to a 2005 resolution. It just seems like we're taking money from one fund to another, and why we need to convolute it to make it look like it's something different. So although I was there, I do realize there was a lot of snow up here, for those of you who spend all year up here. But anyway, David, the question is, and I think I brought it up before, lines seven through 20 is rather confusing, and if you can enlighten us on it, it'd be appreciated.
I don't know if Shirley's in the audience.
Shirley's back there, yes.
I'll take a stab at it first. Shirley's...
She's coming forward, by the way.
Do we need to escort her?
Oh, she can watch pretty good.
Not today. Okay, the 2005-61 resolution identified the process that we were going to go through on an annual basis. So that's why it's being referred to.
Did I answer your question?
I still wonder why we have to refer back. If it's our policy, we do things like that, let's get it done, transfer the money from one account to the other and get it done.
I think you've got to have county board approval to transfer the funds, even though the resolution is there, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct, but we don't have to go back and say, oh, by the way, 15 years ago, this is how they did it.
It's a reference, and I don't know, Grant, perhaps you could speak to that, that we refer back, because that's where the original process is entered on that particular resolution.
I think it's as simple as that, just for purposes of context. The process that we're following today was established by that resolution in 2005, and we've gotten into the habit of referencing resolutions that have ongoing effects and policies and procedures, so no better explanation than a frame of reference and for context.
And not all the people who were here in 2005 are here today, so it's sort of a learning process of what we went through. Okay? Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Well, we need a roll call vote on that one. Yep, two-thirds for the amount of money. Go ahead.
All right, John Burr.
I...
Roy Engelbert.
Yes.
David Inigo.
Yes.
Ken Fisher.
Yes.
Joel Gunlickson.
Yes.
Richard Haynes.
Yes.
Randy Halsted.
Yes.
John Cook.
Yes.
Susan Kohout.
Yes.
David Lino.
Yes.
Ben Meyer.
Yes.
Mark Miller.
Aye.
John Ninus.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Holly Runquist.
Yes.
Kathy Schultz.
Yes.
Don Cuddy.
Yes.
Richard Verley.
Yes.
Leo Zipper.
Aye.
Dan Osted.
Aye.
Charles Brand.
Yes.
That has passed on a vote of 21 yes. We're going to skip down the agenda, because we're going to break at 10 o'clock to hear our speaker today, but we're going to take up one item, and that would be the South Ambulance Station, because we've got a number of people sitting in the audience that I think are still there. That resolution is, we've got to find it. Joel Gunlickson, you want to make a motion and explain?
I would be happy to make a motion to approve Resolution 2014-48.
Okay, is there a second by Ben? Do you want to explain it? Kurt Banderback is back there, so he can come forward if he'd like. You want to start off to explain what the resolution?
I guess in a nutshell, it's, for lack of a term, it kicks at the cat and made its way through committees, and it's basically putting forward the steps of the county supporting the process of going along with the new ambulance station attached to the bug fire station if they decide to go forward, when they decide to go forward.
Okay. Kurt, you want to say something to this, or?
Like Joel said...
Come up to the microphone up there by the...
Like Joel said, we've been working on this for several months now, and I do appreciate everybody's support. Had a chance to meet a lot of you at different committee levels. I think we went through at least five committees. Again, it's an opportunity to really solidify and secure the presence of Door County Emergency Services in Southern Door County. We've got a longstanding relationship with Door County and having your ambulance housed in our current facility. And as we look at improving our facilities, this is an opportunity to improve the facilities for Door County EMS as well. Over the last several years, we've at times had challenges staffing the ambulance. Having a full-time station or a new facility would allow for EMTs outside of the initial area, which right now requires a five-to-six-minute response time to the station. So this would allow us an opportunity to take trained professionals that already live here in Door County and be able to fill those shifts and secure that presence of Door County ambulance within Southern Door County. So it's really a joint opportunity for a cost share that we could share in a facility, ultimately saving money for everybody that's involved. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions. Again, we did talk with all the committees as outlined in the resolution itself. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think this is subject to the referendum passing. It's going to be in the fall.
Correct. The plan is to go to a referendum in November, on November 4th, to go to ask the residents and voters of Brussels Union Gardner to approve the project in general. And as you see, based on this resolution, once we get that formally approved, then we would work on an intergovernmental agreement with Door County, much similar to what you already have in an existing model in Northern Door County. So we will look at not reinventing the wheel, but using the same template.
And also, a key part of this resolution is there's a sunset clause for two years. I would assume it's from this date forward to two years.
I believe that's what the resolution represents, correct?
And that, because if the resolution does not pass, then Door County's going to have to make an evaluation of what to do with the ambulance down there. But we'll pass, cross that bridge when we get there. John, you got anything to add to it or not, or pretty forward? John's on the Town Board of Union, correct?
Yes, I am. I support the ambulance on county seat 110%.
Okay.
I guess my question is, if the referendum fails, would the county support a building, standalone building on that, in that particular area?
I would, I could answer that. I don't think that's been discussed at all, or we're waiting to see what the results are.
And I guess I, why is it good if you just attach it to a fire station versus just having it on a town's building?
Well, I'll just comment, as far as a lot of the different planning meetings, we would look at this as a cost-sharing opportunity. So, you know, it's come up in some of the discussions where it's currently at least not the goal, or hasn't really been the goal of the county, to start having individual standalone EMS stations popping up through outdoor county. Because you have a model up in Door County that exists today, there's expenses, obviously, that you share in or that they share in, and I refer to that as being up in Sister Bay, where they have shared facilities that house fire, EMS, law enforcement, and other county offices. So when you share in the project, you can share basically a parking lot, a septic, a well, all the costs that would be associated, rather than duplicating those costs, those are costs that we share in and be able to maintain one facility versus two. And those are the type of conversations or discussions that have got in the planning and at the different meetings.
And my comment to that, Kurt, is that I think the town of Union would support it a lot more if they know that there's an ambulance going to be staying in that area. And the way it was presented is it could go to wherever, but not in the southern part of the county where it is now. And I would just hope the county board would support a standalone, if the, a standalone building, if the referendum would fail.
And that will be a discussion for future county boards to discuss. I don't think that decision, because there's not enough facts or...
Right, well, this resolution states that it's got to be tied to a town fire station building.
Correct, as of now, but...
Could that resolution be changed or tweaked a little bit? Would the county support standalone building?
I guess, I don't know that answer. I guess we're waiting to see what the referendum does. And the reason they put a two-year sunset clause on there, so if the referendum doesn't fail, you might get one or two more referendums, and if it does fail, then we've got to reevaluate the whole system. And that, to reevaluate it, then go forward, it'd be better to wait and see what the results are.
And I understand that, Dan. I guess, in my opinion, I think the referendum would have a lot better chance to pass if they knew that the ambulance was going to stay in that area. Because if it's not good on a, where's it going to go?
I don't, but if the referendum does pass, it's going to be there still. If it doesn't pass, that's when, I don't know.
For the support of the town of Union and part of Brussels, I just ask that hopefully the county would support a standalone building.
Yeah.
I don't...
John?
Yes, when you presented this on the Law Enforcement Committee, you were talking about that when it was first talked about, that the cost was a lot more. Would you like to elaborate what you have done since then? I believe you have downsized it and so on and so forth.
That's the best answer, is what you want Kurt to answer. John Cook could answer that, I suppose.
Right, I'm the chairman for the Long Range Planning Committee for that project. Concerns were raised about the size, the extra space that we had built into the project. We took a serious look at that, and we eliminated the extra apparatus base we had for fire vehicles from both stations. We combined rooms that we could provide meetings, multipurpose room and kitchenette areas, and we have cut the scale or the size of the project down to what we feel is adequate, that will work for the future. The cost projections on that, we're still coming up with the final numbers. In fact, we have a meeting coming this coming Friday on that. It does not take anything away from the ambulance division. I've spoke several times with Danny Williams, the EMS director. He's very happy with the square footage of the project, and he did not wish to change anything, nor would I think he would. That's where it kind of stands today. It is a good fit for our communities down south. If the referendum does pass, the ambulance will be there. Trying to support a standalone building right now without realizing a cost of what it would cost to the county, the resolution as it appears today is written up, well thought, thought out. I don't know that I would be in favor of changing it at this time.
Okay, is there any other questions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Roy Engelbert.
Yes.
David Inigo.
Yes.
Ken Fisher.
Yes.
Joel Gunlickson.
Yes.
Richard Haynes.
Yes.
Randy Halsted.
Yes.
John Cook.
Yes.
Susan Kohout.
Yes.
David Lino.
Yes.
Ben Meyer.
Yes.
Mark Miller.
Aye.
John Ninus.
Yes.
Tim O'Connor.
Yes.
Holly Runquist.
Yes.
Kathy Schultz.
Yes.
Don Cuddy.
Yes.
Richard Verley.
Yes.
Leo Zipper.
Aye.
Dan Osted.
Yes.
Charles Brand.
Yes.
John Burr.
Yes.
That has passed on a vote of 21 yes. We're going to take a five, 10-minute break. I see Andy Phillips is here.
Good morning again. We have today a presentation that was requested by Supervisor Ken Fisher and by Supervisor Roy Engelbert. Thank you. We have board and management roles in county government. This morning, we have Michael Blaska with Wisconsin Counties Association, and attorney Andy Phillips with Phillips Borowski.
22 years old.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. My name is Mike Blaska. I'm the Chief of Staff for the Wisconsin County...
The treasurer's primary responsibility, collect state money, all right? So they put these state officers out in the reaches and they called them counties and they organized it so that essentially the counties were merely doing the business of the state at the local level. Now, that offends me, it ought to offend you, because you take a look again at our budget and the way the counties operate today, do you think that we're just doing the state's bidding? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. If you look at the amount of money that we levy, that we ask our local citizens to spend on us to support these service offerings, if you look at the complexities associated with those service offerings, we're doing a heck of a lot more than just what the state asks us to do. So in many ways, we've taken a system in 1848 that existed so that there was a satellite office, so to speak, of the state in each and every geographic region within our state, and we've created autonomous governmental entities, but yet we're asked to run these autonomous governmental entities on a system that 150 years ago worked fine, but today doesn't work that well. So we ask the question, must counties, must, we operate differently than other layers of government? It's a rhetorical question, we'll get to that in a bit. So we start with county structure. As I mentioned before, all of our authority comes through chapter 59 of the Wisconsin statutes. By contrast, municipal authority, city, village, comes through the Wisconsin constitution. Counties are body corporate that can sue and be sued. Our powers are limited by state statute. We have to look to the statutes for permission to do things, whereas municipalities have what's called constitutional home rule authority. They are assumed to be able to act on matters of a truly local concern, act consistent with their own best interests. Counties are governed by a board of supervisors. We look at administrative home rule authority, 5903 sub 1. This is a statute that was put in place in the mid-1980s so that counties are able to organize, and getting back to that whole issue with the first slide when we talk about governance, counties are able to organize the way that they see fit. And that's why we have 72 different service delivery models throughout the state, is because of 5903 and that administrative home rule authority. So when we talk about the forms of governance that Mike and I see around the state, we've got what, counties that could be properly characterized as exercising traditional governance, and that is where the board, the board of supervisors approve staff action plans and exercises oversight by monitoring all aspects of the operations. They do that through committees of jurisdiction. The board tries to keep up with and instruct management. And again, the reason it's called traditional governance is prior to the 1960s, 1950s, that's the way almost every county operated. You did not have a separate and distinct executive branch that received authority, received instruction from the board, and then carried out that policy. And then we've got policy governance, and this is, again, it's an advent over the last 40 to 50 years where counties are working more like the state government, the federal government, private corporations, nonprofit organizations, where the board provides policy guidance and oversight, states what the organization must achieve, and then holds management, the executive official within county government accountable for achieving those policy directives. The board is viewed as a leader, describes what means won't be acceptable. The work of the board is focused, all right? Instead of being focused on the minutia in the traditional governance model, remember, you're dealing with operational oversight, so you're focused on the day-to-day operations of county government. Instead of being focused on that minutia, the board is instead focused on revising the desired results and means in terms of an overall policy direction. So there are three types or forms of county government. You have to select one if you're a county in Wisconsin. We have county executive, county administrator, and county administrative coordinator. Currently, there are 11 executive counties, there are 19 administrator counties, leaving how many administrative coordinator counties?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, that's right. All right, so somebody knows there were 72 counties out there. And so, the overwhelming majority of counties follow the administrative coordinator model. And there is no consistency within those 42 as to what it means to have an administrative coordinator model. So let's talk about each just briefly. The county executive functions an awful lot like the governor in terms of the county organization model and the governor in the state organizational model. The executive appoints and supervises department heads subject to board confirmation, appoints members to boards and commissions subject to confirmation, submits an annual budget to the county board, and has veto authority on all ordinances and resolutions that the county board passes. The county board, of course, can override the executive's veto, and the main distinction between a county executive and administrator is, an executive's elected at large within the county and an administrator is appointed. So here we've got the county administrator, 59.18. Chief administrator of the county, and I want you to notice the difference in terms. Chief administrator of the county, county executive, chief executive in the county. So what is the difference between the definition of administrator and executive? Anybody tell me the difference in definition between those two words? As it relates to the county administrator position as opposed to the county executive position, throughout the fact that the executive's elected, that has nothing to do with the title. What's the difference? Yes?
Well, I would guess that the executive gets to try to drive their own policies if they wish.
Okay.
And set out an agenda which the board can follow or not. The administrator pretty much is supposed to do what we, as a county board-
The administrator is accountable to the board. Absolutely. But in terms of pure definition, is there any difference between the term administrator and executive? I can't figure it out.
No.
I really can't figure it out. The legisla-- and you'll see this throughout chapter 59 and in fact throughout the statutes, is that the legislature sometimes uses terms to somehow connote a different meaning, and I don't think they accomplish it. I don't think they do a good job at it, because if you look at the function of the administrator, accountability to the board is a primary, primary differentiating feature between administrator and executive, all right? Beyond that, in terms of what the administrator does, not a heck of a lot of difference day to day than what an executive does. And you'll see there. Responsible for coordinating all administrative and management functions not vested by law with other officers, appoints and supervises department heads, appoints members to boards and commissions subject to board confirmation, submits an annual budget, does not have veto authority over anything that the board passes, but beyond the fact that the executive is elected at large, and beyond the fact that the executive has veto authority, really, what's the difference between administrator and executive? I can't tell. I can't tell. As we noted earlier, however, the county administrator is responsible or is accountable to the board, okay? And so if you ask Mike and I, and this is our personal opinion, it's not an official position of the counties association, and you're not going to find any treatise out there suggesting this, but in terms of what we've seen out there, of all the counties, the most efficient form of county government is the administrator form of county government, because you have a clear distinction between legislative branch and executive branch, and you have a connection between executive branch and legislative branch. And if you look at nonprofit organizations, if you look at for-profit corporations and organizational best practices, that's exactly what they're talking about. So administrator form to us is the best, or most efficient form of county government. If you don't have an executive, if you don't have an administrator, you have an administrative coordinator. It's similar to county administrator but does not have appointment authority and coordinates rather than supervises. What in the world does that mean? Coordinates rather than supervises? Does that mean that the administrative coordinator is a paper shuffler? All they do is get information in and then shuffle it out? Well, it depends. In some counties, that's how the administrative coordinator works. In other counties, they've created, and they're able to do this under 5951 and 5952, they're able to create a standalone position of administrative coordinator and give that administrative coordinator every power and authority that is currently vested in a county administrator under 5918. They just don't call that person a county administrator. Why? I have no idea. Don't ask me. I have no idea why they don't call that person an administrator, but yet that's what some counties do. Other counties have the board chair be the county administrative coordinator, have the county clerk, the treasurer, the finance director, the personnel director, one of those positions be the county administrative coordinator. And their duties vary county by county. Like I said, there's no consistency among those 42 counties that have the administrative coordinator form of government. So let's talk about the legislative branch in county government. Supervisors serve a legislative function. That legislative function is limited to policymaking, lawmaking, budgetary approval, cooperative decision-making. No operational control resides with individual supervisors. And that's true of any legislature that you see out there. Any legislative body, no individual authority resides in any individual legislator. So I ask the question, what is the preeminent policymaking document in Door County government? The most important?
Budget.
The budget. That budget speaks volumes about how much money you're asking the citizens to invest into Door County government, and what services and the level of those services that you're going to be providing back to the citizens of Door County in exchange for that levy. So that budget becomes the preeminent policymaking tool in county government. Your function is to be involved, to represent constituents, be accountable to the public, determine the level of services to be provided, adopt the budget and levy taxes to support that budget, regulate within your statutory authority in chapter 59, in other words, enact policy. Your authority's collective rather than individual. Even if you are a committee chair, you have no operational independent authority to exercise any operational or legislative control over a particular department or function within county government. Again, if we think about you as the legislative body, as the board of supervisors, you're very similar to what we would view as the state assembly. And does anybody think that Robin Voss is an executive position as the speaker of the assembly? No. He is the head of the legislative body, okay? He has one vote, the same as all 98 others within the assembly have one vote, okay? So the question there is, do county board supervisors actually supervise a doggone thing?
No.
No. So thank you very much, legislature, for creating confusion with that name. That's another example of where I think the legislature got a little bit sloppy in the way that they use their terminology. And so if it was up to me, I would go through chapter 59 with whiteout, and everywhere you see supervisor, white it out and replace it with member, because that's what we are. As county board supervisors, we are members of that legislative body. The county board chair, sometimes we'll get into counties, and when I ask the question, what's the executive branch of county government, some people will say, the board chair is the executive branch. No. The board chair is, again, the head of the legislative body, just like the speaker of the assembly is the head of the assembly, or the speaker of the house is the head of the house. Presides over meetings, commonly acts as a spokesperson for the board and for the county, provides guidance and direction on moving legislative matters through the legislative body, which is the county board. Typically, although not always, appoints committee members that are subject to board confirmation, and again, that can be modified by a local rule, customer practice. And so you'll see that the county board chair, again, does not have any singular operational or executive authority. The board sets policies through plans, through budget. You have comprehensive plans, capital improvement plans, parks, farmland preservation, transportation plans, things of that nature. And so, the way that you adopt policy, how do we get legislation? You can do it through ordinance, part of the permanent code within Door County. It's a local law prescribing rules of conduct. It's enforced by officials of the governmental bodies, are part of the permanent code. You also do things through resolutions. And I don't like the language that we've got in this slide, because it says it's usually less permanent. Well, that, that really isn't a good characterization. Resolutions are things that you don't necessarily want into the permanent code, but nonetheless are important enough to put in writing. An example would be if Door County was going to enter into a contract with Kiwanee County for the joint provision of services on a particular issue. You're not going to want to put that agreement into your code of ordinances, but you darn well want a resolution that shows you the date that you agreed with it, what happened in the context of the debate, and the resolution approving that agreement. So that's, again, it's a resolution. Doesn't go into the permanent code, but it's a resolution. And so, as a county board, you have overall budgetary authority. If that's the preeminent policymaking document within Door County government, that's your primary, primary goal, is to have budgetary authority. You have a relationship with other officials and departments within the county, consistent with statutes and constitution, and then that third bullet point is what's important. Role is that of a visionary. So I ask the question, other than your spouse, who in the last two months has called you a visionary? And shouldn't we aspire to be called a visionary by somebody other than our spouse? Because if that's our role as policymakers, if we are supposed to set the policy direction for Door County government, shouldn't we aspire to be called visionaries? Because after all, isn't that what policy is? It's a vision for what we want Door County to be five, 10, 15, 20, 50 years down the road? That's what we ought to aspire to be, is to be called visionaries. The role of the county board is entirely different than the role of the department heads, or the staff, or the administrator, vastly different responsibilities. While the board serves in a legislative capacity in a policymaking role, department heads and staff serve in an operational and advisory role. Two components to the staff responsibility, operations and advisory. Never forget those two roles for department heads and staff. Oftentimes, Mike and I get questions from individuals who are out there saying, you know what? I like the way they do it in Colorado or in California, where the county board supervisors do have individual operational authority over a particular branch or segment of county government. Well, you see that, again, in a lot of the western states, and I think it's, what, Mike? Orange County, California, 10 million people, you've got millions upon millions of dollars in their budget, and you've got individual commissioners, they're not called supervisor, but individual commissioners, who have individual authority over a particular department or departments within that county. And they've got staffs that number into the hundreds, and they've got budgets that number into the millions. And that truly is a combination of the legislative role where they're adopting policy and the executive role where they're carrying out that policy.
Yeah. A few years ago, there was some legis-- well, it's actually probably been six, seven, eight years ago, there was some legislation to allow county boards to change their size other than every 10 years when a census is taken. And there was a lot of talk about our boards that are too big, and they were comparing them to other states. But there's a big difference, and we have a legislative form of government in Wisconsin. In some of these other states, they have a commission form, which is much different. We can't, the legislature does not allow us to go to that form of government. So when I talk about boards being too big, and I'm not here to say what size a board should be, I mean, I think it makes sense to have your citizen be well-represented with folks of different occupation and different ethnic backgrounds. But there's a big difference between Wisconsin government, a legislative form of government, and some of these other states would have a commission form, whereas Andy said, those people are actually in charge of managing county government.
So the functions of the standing committees are the committees of jurisdiction. Remember before when we talked about the traditional form of governance? We had those standing committees or committees of jurisdiction exercising a lot of operational oversight over a particular department. So if we're a legislative body, what is the function of a standing committee? And in many ways, again, we have a parallel in state government where you have committees of the assembly. And those committees of the assembly take up legislative issues, and they forward recommendations on legislation up to the parent body, the assembly. It's no different here in county government when we have our standing committee, is that that standing committee's function is to investigate, to inform, to come out with a reasoned approach, and to forward that reasoned approach onto the county board for deliberation, and then the county board can take some comfort knowing this issue has been reviewed, this issue has been vetted, and we've got a recommendation from people that we respect on that committee as to whether we should go forward with this particular policy measure or not. And so that's essentially what the standing committee function is, is to assist in policy development, assist this board in developing that policy. Contrast that with staff roles and responsibilities. Staff has an obligation, not a choice, but an obligation, to carry out their duties consistent with the policy direction of the board. That's an obligation. Staff doesn't get an opportunity to say, you know what? The board's full of it. I'm not implementing this plan. They don't have that choice. They have to carry out the policy direction of the board. But remember the dual role. The dual role is, number one, operations, but number two, advisory. They have to provide recommendations and give professional advice, and what is the goal with that? Well, how many brand-new supervisors do we have? 2014 is the first year of your term. Do we have any? We have a couple. I can't imagine sitting in your chair. I'll be honest with you, I can't imagine sitting in that chair. Because imagine just showing up to the meeting, and somebody brings forward a multimillion-dollar request to modify the budget in an area, let's say, human services. Holy cow! How are you supposed to know everything about human services when you just sit down? I mean, I can only imagine that your, your information or your knowledge base is pretty limited, given, I mean, what did you have, like a 200-page manual or so when you took out papers on all about county government, right? Is that what it was? What did you, what did you, what information did you get when you took out papers?
Well, some of us are also on town boards. For instance, I'm the town chairman.
There you go. What information did you get when you took out papers? Zero? Nomination papers. Gather a bunch of signatures, and you get a seat. And so one of the things that we talk about is, how do we make sure that when people sit in these seats, that they have all of the information that they need to make an informed decision? Well, number one, staff is responsible for giving you all of the information, but number two, is there a better way to set the table? Is there a better way to make sure that when we first take these seats, that we're up to speed on what's going on? Did you get a copy, when you took out papers, did you get a copy of 2013 or 2014 county budget? Did you look at any of the financial statements? Did you get an overview of all the departments? Did you get any sort of inclination? Did you look at chapter 59? Any of that? And so we suggest, hey, maybe we ought to start coming up with a practice or adopt a policy that talks about what information we're going to give to people interested in running for county board. And most of the pushback we get is, yeah, but then nobody would run. Because I'm sorry, I've seen your paychecks, I know you're not doing this for the money, all right? You're volunteering. For all intents and purposes, you're volunteering, but I think as counties, and this is statewide, this is not just in Door County, statewide, I think we need to do a better job of educating the general public, including people who are going to run for office, as to what counties do, and what our priorities are in Door County. Do we have a strategic plan in Door County? We do. When's the last time we dusted that off and looked at it? How often do we look at it? Do we communicate that out to the general public? Do we give a copy of that to people who are going to sit on this board? Because one of the downfalls or problems with our organization is that we are products of a flawed system. If you go into the corporate arena, for example, in the private sector, let's take Microsoft or Chrysler or IBM, any of those companies, they're going to have a strategic plan, and they're going to have a board that's committed to that strategic, strategic plan, and you're going to have a board that ensures the executives are committed to that strategic plan. So do you think that strategic plan is longer than one year? You bet it is. It has to be for those companies to be successful. Yet in county government, don't we set our budget and say, phew, now I don't have to think about budget for another nine months? This is all right. We're set for next year. And then, we have turnover every two years, and we have fresh faces and fresh ideas and new people coming on that want to do something to change the policy direction of the county, and that's good. We want talented people on the board with thoughts and ideas and convictions. That's great. But if we don't have a commitment to a strategic plan and ensure that that strategic plan is long-term and get an investment in that plan through the public, through getting this information out, so that when people come and sit on this board, we understand that this is the direction that the county is headed, we're just asking to reinvent this stuff every year, every two years. So we don't have to let the system dictate how we operate. However, understand that we're handcuffed a bit, and so we got to make sure that we're vigilant about ensuring that our long-range plans are put into place, that our focus is given to those long-range and those strategic plans, and that we carry those out. So again-
The good news, Andy, is that we do, and it's on the main page of our website, it's a resolution 2010-08. So anyone wanting to refresh, that's right on that main webpage with our strategic priorities.
Good.
But it's about probably time that we relook at it.
It is, and again, this is not a criticism of Door County, because there are 71 other counties that suffer from that same flawed system. And I get it, we understand that it's flawed, but I think there are things that we can do as an organization to try to work around those flaws in the system. So again, getting back to staff roles and responsibilities, the second component of their role, their responsibility, answer questions, present reports, make sure that the elected officials, the legislative body is able to make an informed decision, offer alternatives and recommendations as needed. This is not an option, this is an obligation. Again, we're talking about staff roles not being necessarily something they can choose to ignore, but something that they're required to do. So I break it down like this in terms of the five questions. What and why questions are answered by the policymakers, by the board. Where, when, and how questions are answered by staff, administration, and operations. So let's talk about a hypothetical here. Will Door County establish a hiking trail system? That's the what question. The board answers that. You decide if you're going to establish a hiking trail system. Why? Is the system going to benefit the county and the residents and the citizens of this county? Now, who's going to build and maintain the system? What's the timeframe for implementation? Where will the system need to be maintained? Those are all questions that are delegated to staff. Those are operational questions that staff has to get into. And I understand, you'll see at the bottom, I've got a note there. The dividing lines between the top two questions and the bottom three are blurred when it comes to the initial debate about, are we going to establish a hiking trail system? Because the first question out of any board member's mouth, as soon as somebody makes a motion to establish a hiking trail system, is what? What's the very first question?
How much it going to cost?
How much is this going to cost? That's right. And if you look at these, you're going to say, wait a minute, cost is a how, when, where question. We don't deal with that. That's a staff issue. You're right, but remember, what's the second role of staff? To provide information necessary for you to make an informed policy decision. So really, what we're talking about on the initial debate is focused on the dual role of staff. Yeah, they are supposed to operate and administer policy, but they're also supposed to give you the advice and give you the recommendations to make an informed policy decision. So once you pass that resolution establishing the hiking trail system, and you put the parameters on it in terms of cost, in terms of maintenance, in terms of where it's going to go, what do you do with it then? After you have that, you hand it off to staff. Does that mean every meeting then, you come back and you say, okay, I want to, I want to revisit this question of cost, I want to revisit this question of where this system is going to go? No, absolutely not. Your hands off. Staff takes it and carries it forward from that point. I always like to use the example of the Green Bay Packers when it comes to the distinction between policy administration as well. Let's imagine for a moment that Mike McCarthy is the county board. Mike McCarthy, the head coach. He's going to call a play, and who does he send that play into?
Quarterback.
The Packers administrator, Aaron Rodgers, right? He's the administrator for the Green Bay Packers. What does Aaron Rodgers do? He communicates it all to the staff. Now, does Mike McCarthy have an ear in the helmet of every single Packers player? No, just one, just Aaron Rodgers, just Aaron Rodgers. So he communicates the play into Aaron Rodgers, and Aaron Rodgers calls the play in the huddle. Now, when Aaron Rodgers gets to the line, if Aaron Rodgers wants to call an audible, do you think Mike McCarthy has to authorize Aaron Rodgers to call that audible?
No.
Absolutely, he does. There's a word for if a quarterback calls an unauthorized audible, it's called TJ Ruble. Everybody remember him? He called one audible in his career, and that was the last game he ever played for the Packers, all right? So Aaron Rodgers may be authorized to call an audible, he may not be, but he's going to call the play that was sent in or an authorized audible, and that play's going to go forward. Now, do you think Mike McCarthy cares how that play goes? Absolutely, he does. So what is he going to do? He's going to evaluate, and as part of that evaluation, he's going to receive feedback from Aaron Rodgers and perhaps other team members as to how that play went. And then the policymaker, Mike McCarthy, is either going to continue with the policy he had before, call a very similar play, or he's going to change the policy and say, you know what, we need to start working on our long passing here on this particular play, so I'm going to change the policy and send it in. Ultimately, the success or failure of a play comes down to one of two things. Number one, it was a bad play, bad design, or that's a policymaker issue, in which case you change the policy. Or number two, it's bad execution. And if it's bad execution, what happens? People start losing jobs, they don't get the play anymore, okay? So the policymaker's role is, again, send in that policy, allow the team to carry it forward, evaluate that policy, either change policy direction or change who's carrying forward that direction. And that's a great metaphor for exactly how, in policy governance, what we're talking about, with the legislative body adopting a policy, handing it off to administration, having administration carrying it forward, then holding administration accountable for the results that come about as a result of that policy direction. It always helps to have a chain of command policy, and this is one of the issues that we see come up from time to time, actually quite prevalently in a lot of different counties, is that everybody says, well, how do I handle this particular issue? If you're going to be a visionary, is there ever an opportunity at a county board meeting where you should be reacting to something that is news and information to you, and you have to come up with a solution? Absolutely not. Absolutely. If you're going to be a visionary, you already have the plan in place and the policy set for how you're going to deal with each and every issue. That doesn't mean each and every issue is predictable, or is similar or the same as any issue you've handled in the past. However, you ought to have a framework for dealing with the issue, and that's why we suggest chain of command policies. Look at the bottom bullet point there. Each and every county board member ought to have the best rolodex in the county. And people always ask me, often ask Mike, you know, what do I do if I get a call from And people always ask me, often ask Mike, you know, what do I do if I get a call from a constituent and they've got a problem with the way that a road is being paved outside their home? Well, what do you do? Well, you get out the rolodex. And you get that person in touch with people who can offer solutions and offer assistance. That's your job. You're like a shepherd. You're helping people and guiding them through the county government process to make sure that they can get the results that they deserve. That doesn't mean you solve the problem. That doesn't mean you grab the shovel, head out there, and start digging dirt along with the highway crew and say, we've got to make it wider over here. No, that's not your job. Your job as a shepherd is to make sure that you put the people in touch with the decision-makers and the people that can make a difference. Now, who's the primary person? Number one on your rolodex ought to be?
Maureen.
Maureen. And she's happy to take all of these calls because Maureen ought to know exactly who to call in every single circumstance. All right? So, the primary person that you direct them to is Maureen. All right? So, again, sometimes codifying this in policy, whether it be part of the ordinances, part of your bylaws, your county board rules, doesn't matter. Put it in writing exactly how you're going to follow the chain of command in certain circumstances. One of the areas that I deal with an awful lot where it comes up is in employment issues because I get hired to come in and clean up really messy situations where we have a misbehaving county employee. And oftentimes, we get tripped up figuring out which committee has jurisdiction to review this? Does the county board chair need to know about this? What's the administrator's role? Set all of that out in one of these chain of command policies. It makes life a lot easier. And from a legal standpoint, you put outside lawyers like me out of business because I don't have a mess to clean up. It's all very orderly. You may get sued, and everybody gets sued at one point in time or another, but at least you followed a consistent policy for ensuring that the right decision was reached. So, it's a very important aspect when we talk about the policies that you can have as a county. It's a very important policy to have. Now, how do our courts, and up until now, I've been talking a lot in theory because remember I mentioned early on that in our federal constitution, we've got Article 1, Article 2, Article 3, clear delineation between the branches. Same in state government, different articles within the state constitution. You look at Chapter 59, they're not going to have a section on administration and a section on legislative branch. It's not there. It's all blurred. It's all mixed in with each other in Chapter 59. So, a lot of what I've been talking about is theory. However, the theory has backing. There's been one case that's made its way up through the court system and gotten to the Court of Appeals on dealing with the distinction between the policymaking branch in county government and the executive or administrative branch in county government. And that was Shute versus Vanderhayde. That was a dispute between the Outagami County Exec and the Outagami County Board. And I thought this quotation was particularly important, not so much for what it says. It does reinforce everything that we've been talking about thus far, but also for who said it. First, the county board's function is primarily policymaking and legislative while the county executive, and for purposes of our discussion, you can replace county executive out with county administrator, while that executive or administrator functions as an administrator and manager, cites to an attorney general opinion. So, the attorney general has said this, and now a court's saying this. Policy's been defined as a high-level overall plan embracing the general goals and acceptable procedures, especially of a governmental body. Cite to the dictionary. So, now, we've got a court. We've got the attorney general. We've got Webster's on board. And then, it continues. Legislative power, as distinguished from executive powers, the authority to make new laws but not to enforce them or appoint the agents charged with the duty of such enforcement. Citation of McQuillan on municipal corporations. McQuillan's is a nationwide treatise that is the leading treatise on how municipal entities operate and work. So, now, we've got the court, the AG, dictionary, and now, McQuillan's. And then, finally, we wrap it up by saying, the crucial test for determining what is legislative or policymaking and what is administrative has been said to be whether the ordinance or resolution or policy is one making a new law or ordinance or resolution or policy or one executing one already in existence. And so, not only is this theory that I've been talking about something that I dreamed up or Mike Blaskett dreamed up or somebody dreamed up, it's in Chapter 59. And it may not be as simple as looking at Article 1, Article 2, Article 3 of a constitution, but it's there. And it's recognized by the courts, by the attorney general, through application of dictionary definitions by the leading treatise on municipalities throughout the country. And so, when you think about the role of the policymaking branch and the role of the administrative branch in county government, this really highlights, this slide right here is generally where I get a lot of board members really upset with me. And I don't mean to. All right? So, save your looks of scorn until I get done explaining the position here. All right? This really highlights the distinction. So, what does it take if you're going to hire a new department head? Let's use administrator in the county. And you're taking out a help-wanted ad for Door County Administrator. You're going to say, we want somebody who has experience, who has education. We're going to check the background. They might have to be bonded. We want them professionally current on all their accreditations. We might request that they be members of particular associations to show their dedication to that particular field. In other words, we want the best and the brightest administrator that's out there. And why do we want that? Because our policies are very important. We have a lot of good things to do in Door County. We want somebody that we can trust to carry out the policy direction that we're going to give them. So, you want the best and the brightest. Now, think about the help-wanted ad for county board member. What are the qualifications?
Heartbeat.
Yeah. Got to be over 18, right?
Eighteen.
Can't be a felon.
And legally qualified to vote.
You have to have a high school diploma, right? Oh, no, you don't have to have that.
You have to be a citizen.
You have to be a citizen, right? That's a pretty short help-wanted ad, isn't it? And so, people always say, well, wait a minute. I've got a lot of great experience. And that's offensive when you say that you only have to be 18 and not a felon. That's not my point. We have a lot of incredibly talented people that are serving county government throughout this state. And like I said before, I know you're not doing this for the money. In your heart, you know this is the right thing to do and you want to serve. And that's why you're a policymaker. You have that connection to the citizens. And that's what our state has said is the most important thing to do, to have in terms of qualifications for this board. We don't want a bunch of professional lawyers, doctors, business owners, stuff like that, representing the people. We want people representing the people who are qualified to represent the people, and that means they're elected. All right? And if you look at the talent that we have on county boards throughout this state, we have farmers who I think are the very first small business owners in this country, and they know how to run a really, really awesome business. We have other business owners. We have doctors. We have lawyers. We have accountants. We have people who've shown a commitment to serve and have a lot of talent. But again, base qualifications, they have a connection to the people. So, if that's the preeminent responsibility as the board is to have that connection to the people, be a visionary, be a policymaker, and then hand that policy off to the people that you're requiring to have a lot of professional experience to carry out that vision, to carry out that policy. And let's go back to that Green Bay Packer example for a moment. What do you think would happen if Mike McCarthy got so upset with the way that Aaron Rodgers was doing? He said, all right, forget it. Throws down a helmet, some shoulder pads, runs out on the field, and executes the play himself.[1101.88][1101.88](Laughter). How do you think he'd do? Might not that well.
I don't think he could run that far.
He might not be able to. But if he did, and the play went poorly, who's to blame?
Mike McCarthy.
Mike McCarthy? Maybe. What if the left tackle completely missed a block? And had that block not been missed, Mike McCarthy would have thrown a dart to the end zone to Jordy Nelson. You don't know. How can you tell? Because it was broken from the get-go. You had the policymaker in there running the play. So, don't do it. Policymakers adopt policy. Operations carry out that policy, and they have an obligation to carry out that policy. So, our goal is to work together between the policymakers and administration. Know your job and try not to interfere with that of administration. And vice versa. Administration ought to know the job of this body and not interfere with the job of this body. And getting back to one of the very first slides, that's where I said a lot of disputes and a lot of disagreements come from, is not understanding roles and responsibilities. Have a discussion about those roles and responsibilities, and don't ever be afraid to have that discussion. Devote the time needed to do a good job. Read the background materials that administration prepares. And I can tell you just from firsthand experience that nothing is more frustrated when you present a case to somebody and it's clear that they haven't read that case and they don't understand what you're talking about. Personally, I'm a lawyer, and so, I've had opportunity to argue cases in front of judges. There'll be times when I write what I think is a really good brief. I will submit that brief. I will show up for oral argument before the court, and it's clear that the judge hasn't read one sentence in my brief and doesn't care what I have to say, and then at the end says, Phillips, you lose. All right. I walk out of the courtroom, and what do I say? I didn't even get a fair shake there. That's not right. There are other times where I write what I think is a really good brief. I show up for oral argument. The judge is engaged, asks me questions. It's clear that he or she has read my brief. It's clear that he or she is engaged. And then, at the end, the judge says, Phillips, you lose. I can walk out, I lost, I don't feel good, but at least I got a fair shake. That's all we're saying here, is that as a county board, give administration a fair shake. That doesn't mean you give them a free pass. Means you give them a fair shake. If you have questions, if you want to confront, if you want to cross-examine, if you want to do those things, do it in a public arena. Here, have that debate. That's what staff is there to do, is to give you information and answers. So, ask questions about that report, but read the background materials and devote the time necessary in order to make sure that you're making an informed policy decision. The fourth bullet point is, I think, incredibly important. It's okay to admit what you don't know. I go back to picking on the four new supervisors here. It's incredibly intimidating to raise your hand and say, what is the difference between human services and human resources? And those of us who have been in county government for a long time will chuckle and say, oh, my gosh, there's a big difference between human services and human resources. But I bet if you polled the general public in Door County, there's a pretty good chance that the vast majority of people don't have any clue what the difference is between human services and human resources. So, why are we assuming that the new supervisor knew anything about that? So, it's okay. Let's encourage an atmosphere where all questions are encouraged, again, in an effort to get the information out so that we can make informed decisions. Keep your mind open to change. Understand that the administrator or the department head or the staff person is practicing a career. This isn't a hobby. This isn't their volunteer time. This is something that they've decided they're going to dedicate their life to. So, treat it with that level of respect and importance. Fourth bullet, again, don't become a complaint department. And that can happen. Remember before when I said that your job or your role as a county board member is to be a shepherd, to help guide people through these issues? Well, if you become a complaint department, and what I mean by that is if you have a particular staff member that constantly bends your ear and you listen to that staff member, and then you try to work around administration, work around department head, and try to solve the problem, again, I know you're not doing this for the paycheck, so you're doing it just to try to make sure that you're doing the right thing. So, a very noble purpose, but it becomes a disaster. It becomes a disaster, not only for the destructive character that you bring to the entire organizational operation, but also your phone never stops ringing. As soon as they figure out that you're the go-to person to work around administration or work around a department head, it's going to be nonstop in terms of that flood of complaints that keep coming to you. So, avoid that temptation. Think of your role, again, as a shepherd to make sure that people get to the people that can answer the problem or provide the solution. Don't make promises outside of board meetings. Again, there are legal reasons why you don't want to do that, but also, don't do it because it creates a really bad precedent for deliberating things open and in the public. And how do you think it looks if we have a predetermined outcome to a particular measure coming before the board to the public that shows up to listen to debate? Let's take on your budget. Let's say that you establish a block of voters that are going to vote in favor of a budget. So, you show up at the meeting. This budget's been a topic of conversation in the community. It's been a topic of newspaper articles and editorials, things like that. And you show up to the meeting. Somebody says, I move to adopt the budget second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we're done with our budget. How does that look to the public? And what is the signal there to the press that are attending? Oh, my gosh, we might have a walking quorum issue. So, everybody know what a walking quorum is? And I know we'll have open meetings discussion later, and we'll get into that discussion. Yes, what's a walking quorum?
A walking quorum is when you talk to other supervisors on the telephone and asking them how they would vote for a subject matter.
You go door to door and you build consensus, right? You go and you talk to fellow supervisors about a particular item that's going to come before the board, and you build consensus, and you try to build a majority of votes that are going to support your particular measure. And so, I ask this, what's the difference between a walking quorum and politics? Somebody tell me the distinction in that definition. And so, I can stand up here as a lawyer, and by law, I'm obligated to say, don't have these discussions outside the walls of this particular room right here or whatever committee room, but I know what's going to happen because you're all politicians. But just be aware of it. Be very aware that there are people out there paying attention, and to the extent possible, make sure that any debate on a policy question happens in the context of that meeting. It's very important that you do that. Then, finally, listen what your constitutional officers and employees have to offer and let them know you're listening. I haven't talked much about constitutional officers as yet. I'm going to get into that in a moment. But remember, they're a unique position within county government. You don't have municipal constitutional officers. And in state government, you have constitutional officers, but they don't have the same relationship with state government that we have with our constitutional officers as county government. They don't have a different boss, so to speak, than we have. And so, essentially, with the constitutional officers, again, a lot of disputes and disagreements arise because we have a lack of understanding of roles and responsibilities. I encourage you to sit down and talk with your sheriff, talk with your clerk, talk with your ROD, talk with your treasurer about their responsibilities. Find out from their perspective what it is that they feel they need to carry out their constitutional and statutory obligations. Again, this is talking about the complaint department. Don't become a complaint department. If you have to criticize any county employee, do it constructively. Criticize the work rather than the individual, and do it in the context of a meeting, but don't sandbag them. And does everybody understand what I mean by don't sandbag them? Don't hold all of your cards and then display them before the public and everybody in the context of a meeting and call them to the carpet. If you've got an issue, remember that staff's responsibility is twofold. Carry out your policy directives, but then, number two, to give you the information and advice necessary for you to make an informed decision. If you have a particular issue with a staff member, number one, you call Maureen, but number two, if you're going to address that person, do it privately so that you don't have the airing of the dirty laundry right here in public. That doesn't look good. Doesn't make this board look good, doesn't make administration look good, and to the public, it just looks like dysfunction within county government. So let's avoid that. So again, the board fulfills its policymaking function only if it can rely on and trust administration to carry out that policymaking function. So when we talk about the role of the policymaking body, of the legislative branch of Door County Government, number one, you enact policy, all right? But number two, you have to hold staff accountable for carrying out that policy, because if they're not accountable to you, if you don't hold them accountable, then you have no assurance that they're going to be able to carry it out in the direction that you have. So we'll talk about that in a moment. And that's how important evaluations become. You have to constantly evaluate staff and evaluate how that policy is being carried So let's back up a second. We've talked a lot about county government. We've talked a little bit about federal and state government. Let's talk about private corporations. Now remember that every single private corporation in Wisconsin is organized under Chapter 180 of the Wisconsin statutes. Chapter 180 is called the Model Business Corporations Act. The reason it's called a Model Business Corporations Act is because in all 50 states, they have some form very similar to Chapter 180 that serves as the framework or template for organizing a private corporation in their state. In Wisconsin, again, it's no different. Chapter 180. Under Chapter 180, every single private corporation has to have at least one shareholder. So if we're going to make the comparison between Door County Government and private corporation, who are the shareholders in county government? Who are the stakeholders? Taxpayers, who else? Who has an interest in the outcome of county government operations? Because in private business, the shareholders have an interest in how that corporation does. It's a monetary interest. Not limited here in county government to money, but who has an interest in our operations? Taxpayers, employees, who else?
The state government.
The state. Beyond taxpayers, what about people who live here but don't pay taxes? Do they have an interest in how we do? You bet they do. And so I've divided it into three component groups. Taxpayers, citizens, and residents, employees, and the state. All three of those component groups have an interest in the outcome of county government. And so we often get the question, well, do we represent the people who elected us, the people who pay taxes here, the people who reside? Who do we represent? In my mind, you represent the interests of all three of those things. And depending upon the nature of the question before you, it may be more important or less important to one of those groups, but ultimately, all three of those groups are the stakeholders in county government, and their interests have to be accounted for, no matter the decision that's being made. This next one's easy. Who's the board of directors in county government?
We are.
We are.
The board. I told you it was easy. Every single corporation in Wisconsin has to have officers. So the legislature and the people who invented this Model Business Corporations Act decided, not only do we need a board of directors, we also need officers. So who's our CEO?
Administrator.
The administrator. That's right.
CEO.
Is the CEO in county government. And so when you think about it from a private corporation model standpoint, think about, let's just take Chrysler, for example. You've got Chrysler, that's a corporation. They've got shareholders. Obviously, they're publicly traded. They've got a board of directors. That board of directors' primary responsibility is to what? Hire the CEO, right? If Chrysler starts underperforming, what is the board of directors going to do?
Fire them.
Fire the CEO. Is the board of directors going to put on the welding helmet and go out on the line? Absolutely not. They're going to hold that CEO accountable, aren't they? That's their primary responsibility. That CEO understands that the CEO's job is dependent upon following the board's directive on policy and ensuring a return to the shareholders of Chrysler, the stakeholders, the people who have an interest in the outcome of Chrysler's operations. So this is very simplistic, but let's take a look at the organizational chart. If everything that we've been talking about in terms of the federal government, the state governments, and private corporations as an organizational model, if that's what we think is a really good organizational model, do we think this is a good organizational model for county government? Where we have the county board, we have the committees that help inform the county board in terms of policy direction. That policy direction goes to the administrator, and then the administrator is responsible for communicating that policy direction out to department heads and ultimately staff. We have no arrows coming back from staff or department heads up to the county board or the committees. Does that mean there's no interaction between the department heads and staff to the committees or county board? Absolutely not. No, no. Department heads and staff, remember, their second role is to provide information, advice, and alternatives to county board committees when it comes to enacting policy, so you can make an informed policy decision. But in terms of direct supervision, direct line of authority, there are no arrows from department heads and staff back up to committees or county board. Does anybody disagree with that organizational chart? And it's okay if you do. Yes?
Well, the arrows should go back to, from department heads back up to committees.
You think it should be a solid arrow, or should it be kind of a dotted arrow where we're talking about their? No, I'm asking the question, because that's a good question. In terms of the information, like I discussed, or do you think that the department heads ought to report to the committees?
Uh, there should be a dashed arrow.
Okay, so it's the information, like I've been discussing. And I agree with that. I agree with that. And this gets back into the M-word issue. Does anybody know what the M-word is? Micromanagement. And micromanagement's in the eye of the beholder. There's no such thing as a good definition of micromanagement. And you guys keep facing forward. I'm going to ask the staff back there, do any board members micromanage? Raise your hand if they do. Every hand went in the air. You wouldn't believe how quickly it shot in the air. Now, board, do any of you, raise your hand if you micromanage? Oh, nobody? Nobody? There's a, oh, Ken does.
Well, we all do at times. The rest of them are afraid to admit it. I'm not. But I want to go back one, one clip, if you could, to the stakeholders.
You bet.
In our situ, or my situation, let's say, I'm on resource planning, all right? And we deal with the people directly, and many times we'll have to, we have a situation where a person wants to do a certain thing, and we have to let all the local landowners know about it, and they'll come and give us their opinion. Now, the stakeholders, we have taxpayers, citizens, residents. We should, you should have voters up there too, because some people are residents, but they don't vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Just because they're a resident doesn't mean they vote. But anyway, uh, we respect all of them. We listen to all, all the people that come to us. Some are, we have a lot of non-resident, non-voting landowners in Door County. They want to keep the county the way they saw it 10 years ago or 20 years ago when they first came here. They don't want any change, and many times, uh, and again, we respect them all, we listen to them all. But is there a, I'm trying to diplomatically ask the question. Is there?
Do we listen to those jerks from Illinois?
No. Well, I don't want to say it that way.
I'll say it, because I get to go home after.
No, of course, do you know. No, it's not, it's not so much that.
I was born in Illinois, for the record.
Is there a difference? I'll tell you what my take on it, and if I'm wrong, you can tell me. I want to listen more to the resident voter and give more weight, and maybe I shouldn't. I try not to. I try to be fair to everybody, but it just seems that the people that vote for us, elect us, get us in these seats, they have more of a stake than somebody from outside who merely owns property and comes up here a couple of weeks out of the year. And I equate it to myself, if I own property in, in, let's say, Marinette County for hunting purposes, and I went up there two weeks out of the year to hunt, uh, I'd be interested, and I might even go and voice my opinion on certain issues, but I would never think to dictate to that county board how they should, you know, do something, only to satisfy me. I would, I would recognize that the people that live in that county, vote in that county, would have a higher standing than me. I would accept that, and that's what I would look at. Is that right, or is that wrong?
I think it depends on the issue, doesn't it? I mean, ultimately, it talks about the impact of whatever you're considering on the people who are residents versus the people who are taxpayers, versus the people who are citizens, versus the employees, versus the state. You account for all interests, but one of those component groups may have a much heightened interest depending upon the measure that's before you. And ultimately, who are you accountable to? You're accountable to the people that voted for you. And so ultimately, you have an electorate that you have to satisfy. The people that put you in that chair are expecting a certain result, because again, your primary responsibility is to be accountable to the electorate and to be, you know, to get elected again. So I think it really depends on the issue. But to ignore one component group or favor one over the other, I think that's a mistake. I think that's a mistake.
And I see, we don't.
And that's, and that's where you run into some problems. But I think in large part, it depends upon, it depends upon the issue that's before you. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that? All right, let's, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I'd like to go back to the micromanagement for a moment, if I can.
Please do.
Uh, if a committee passes a policy in a department, it then becomes responsibility of the department head to carry out the committee policy, correct? So you pass a policy for that committee and have the department head carry out that policy. Is that micromanaging?
No, it's policy direction.
Okay, thank you.
But the only thing I would suggest is that where does that policy first get filtered down through? Administrator. Administrator is responsible for making sure that department head carries out that policy, not the committee. Not the committee. And then the committee looks to the administrator to ensure that policy is carried out. Okay? So again, looking at that organizational chart, committee recommends adoption of a policy, county board adopts that policy, communicates that policy to administrator, administrator is responsible for carrying that policy out through the department head to staff, and then it works its way back up in terms of the evaluation of that policy, back up through the administrator. Yes, sir.
Getting back to the election, um, is there anybody you can think of who should not run for the county board because of a conflict of interest?
Oh, there are plenty. Well, there are conflicts that exist. You can't be a county employee, for example, and also sit on the county board. By statute, you can't hold both of those titles, county employee and county board member. There are other examples of conflicts that the law has said those two offices are incompatible. We just had an attorney general opinion last year that said you can't be a deputy sheriff and be a county board member. And so there are examples like that throughout the statutes. In terms of just outright, I can't, it's hard for me to list them off, but there are examples out there. And Grant, I know, is aware of those as well in terms of incompatibilities, so.
Okay, to expand a little bit further, what about serving on the town board?
That's not a conflict. You can, you can have town board and county. Now, certain issues may come up that present a conflict of interest or an ethics situation depending upon the nature of business that comes before this board or before the town board, where you may be required by law to recuse yourself from any voting or deliberation on a particular topic. But as a matter of law, those two offices are not incompatible. You can hold both positions at the same time.
In fact, Andy, we've had legislators that have served in the state assemblies, served on the county board, and served on the town board, all three.
Yes.
I think with Mr., I don't know if Mr. City saw the article or not, but a while back, the Journal Sentinel had an article in there about, didn't necessarily say it was a conflict of interest legally, but they were saying, like, say, if you're the chairman of a town board and a county board supervisor, if an item comes up to vote, which side do you think that person's going to be?
Yeah, it's a great question. Especially with towns, that issue comes up an awful lot with zoning and land use issues. And so I'll get into this when we get into the ethics portion of this discussion, but it's the smell test. And our recommendation is that it may not by law be a conflict of interest. It may not by law be an ethics violation, but if it smells, run the other way. Get away from it, all right?
Right.
You know, go ahead and recuse yourself from any of the deliberations, discussions, and especially voting on that particular issue. It just doesn't look good. A great example would be is if your brother is applying to open up a huge gravel pit in a particular area. And by law, the relationship of being a brother is not going to present a conflict situation or an ethics situation, but it still smells when it gets out there in the paper. So is that something that you ought to get away from? And I think Mike has that example too with his brother that he's going to talk about in the meetings portion of this. Now, Mike didn't recuse himself, but that's, Mike, Mike has his own set of ethics that he likes to live by. And we'll talk about that later.
To expand, to expand on that a little bit further than, as a town chairman, who also deals with zoning matters in my township, and I have been appointed to the resource planning committee as well, are you stating that every time a matter comes up before the resource planning committee from the town of Bailey's Harbor, I should recuse myself?
No, absolutely not. I think it's case by case. Depends on the circumstances. And I can't give you advice on this. There's only one person in this room who can give you advice on this. He's sitting right here. He's your get out of jail free card on ethics issues, on conflicts issues. Utilize him.
Well, I think if I was in jail, he'd keep me there.
Maybe.
I think, Andy, I mean, you're going to talk about it later in the presentation about ethics, but, I mean, well, the key is, key thing to remember is if you stand to gain personally. But I served on the Dane County Board, as I said, for 18 years, and, and I was also on the town board and the town chair for eight years. Did I advocate for town, town issues, giving towns more authority? Yeah, all the time, but that's not a conflict. And, and those positions are compatible. As Andy said, certain positions are not compatible, like the recent attorney general opinion that a county board chair could not serve as administrative coordinator, because those two positions are not compatible. But as a town, town official, I had, came from the rural areas, I advocated for town issues, and that's, that's, that's not a conflict of interest.
So we get back, let me just bring this discussion back for a moment to the whole micromanagement issue. And the only thing I want to point out there is, like I said earlier, micromanagement is in the eye of the beholder. And the reason it's in the eye of the beholder is, I think, is that there's a lot of misunderstanding about roles and responsibilities. So have this discussion with departments and talk to them about roles, responsibilities of staff, roles and responsibilities of board members. And we'll get into this in a moment when we talk, it'll bring it into focus a little bit as we get into some very specific examples of what is or is not appropriate in terms of the board and is, and is and is not appropriate in terms of staff, in terms of those roles and responsibilities.
Andy, got a question on your end?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you talk about any roles or not having roles in evaluation of staff and in evaluation of the administrator?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so when everybody, when I said, is this a good organizational chart, what's the one thing that's missing from that that we've actually talked about today? That's constitutional officers. Clerk of courts, registered deeds, treasurer, clerk, sheriff, surveyor, coroner. You could even throw corporation counsel in this to an extent, because they're a hybrid situation. The corporation counsel is accountable to this board. So where do the constitutional officers fall on the organizational chart? Well, we look at it, and we've got a constitution that lists out those constitutional officers, but it's actually silent on the actual duties that are attended upon those constitutional officers. The duties that are attended on those constitutional officers are set out by statute, and then we've also got court decisions out there that suggest these constitutional officers have some sort of inherent authority that they brought with them when those offices were created, especially with the office of sheriff. You'll see, the court decisions are replete with examples of what's considered a sheriff's constitutional duty. So how is it that as a county board, we can ensure that we are not encroaching upon a constitutional officer's duties and responsibilities whenever we're taking an action, especially if the constitution is silent on those constitutional duties? Well, number one, in Chapter 59, there are sections on each of these officers that talk about what their statutory obligation, what their duties are. Take a look at those statutory sections. Take a look at any court cases that help define those historical duties. But then the most important part of this is to have a discussion with those elected officials and find out from their perspective what it is that they do. What it is they do. And in many ways, the legislature has created an irreconcilable conflict between constitutional offices and county government and the county board. Because the constitutional officer has an obligation and a duty to follow the statute and the constitution in terms of what they need to do. But how do they do it? Where do they get their money? From the board. So that's a conflict. And so oftentimes, you'll see, and in Milwaukee, I don't know if you've seen recently, but the sheriff there is asking for more money, a greater appropriation, to hire more deputies in order to fulfill his constitutional obligation to protect and serve. And the county board has said, you do what you will with the money we gave you, that's just enough. How does that get solved? How does that issue get solved? Who knows? Who knows? And so again, it's an irreconcilable conflict, which means let's have a lot of discussion with our constitutional officers about duties and responsibilities, and ensure that whatever decision were made, you're not always going to agree, but there ought to be a dialogue and a give and take about what's necessary for that constitutional officer to carry out their duties. So in many ways, when we look at the organizational chart and plug constitutional officers in there, they're responsible to the electorate for their constitutional obligations, but on everything else, they're responsible to the county board, meaning money, meaning employees that work within those constitutional offices are employees of the county, who controls terms and conditions of employment for all county employees, the board. And so again, there's a dual persona there for constitutional officers, which means that we ought to work with them to ensure that they're on the same page as we are in terms of the policy direction for the county. So policy governance overview. And I've talked about this before. Jonathan Carver is a gentleman who, with his wife, reformed Iowa school boards because they were dysfunctional, and so he came up with a set of organizational rules that are going to govern the way that governmental organizations operate, and it's called policy governance. And if you look at policy governance, there's a lot of books written about it, so go ahead and feel free to read that if you're having problems getting to sleep at night. It's, I find it fascinating, but to many people, it's boring, and I get that. So when we look at the Carver policy governance model, which I think is a really good model, in that the board's job is, on behalf of some ownership, again, the stakeholders, the shareholders, to see to it that the county achieves what it should, the ends, and avoids what is unacceptable, the means. And you define all of that through policy, and think of it as a funnel. You create the policy, you define exactly how that policy is going to be carried forward, and as soon as you hit the point where you say, everything that administration does within these policy guidelines is acceptable, you stop legislating, and your job is done, except to evaluate how staff is carrying out that policy. So what can go wrong if we don't follow the policy governance model? If we allow Mike McCarthy to throw on the shoulder pads and helmet and go out and run a play? If administration, Mike, or excuse me, if the board micromanages and does administration's job and doesn't hold administration accountable? And there are examples there of what can go wrong. We have long-running meetings, reams and reams of documents are necessary for the policymaker to get up to speed so that that policymaker can make operational decisions on behalf of staff, and then we get about two-thirds down, and we get to reactivity versus proactivity. And if we're going to be visionaries, are we going to be reactive or proactive? We're going to be proactive. And so focus on proactivity, focus on being a visionary, focus on, again, defining the strategic direction for county government and allowing administration the opportunity and the resources to carry out that strategic direction. And the bottom line is incredibly important as well. There's no incisive way to evaluate the executive. Because again, if Mike McCarthy throws on the helmet and shoulder pads, who does he have to blame when that play goes terribly bad? Himself, himself. And we really don't have any way to evaluate why that play went bad, because it could have been McCarthy's problem, could have been the problem of the play call, could have been a problem with somebody else on the team. We don't know. We just don't know. So let's create clear roles and responsibilities, then we have that incisive way to evaluate the job of the administrator or the executive. I thought this was a great quote in Carver's materials. Most of what the majority of boards do either does not need to be done or is a waste of time when done by the board. Conversely, most of what boards need to do for strategic leadership is not done. And again, I want to emphasize that we're products of a flawed system. We have an annual budget cycle, we have a two-year election cycle. Those are big strikes against us. We have to be vigilant, and we have to develop solid workarounds to get around that very, very flawed system. So we ask, is there a constant and consistent reference to the mission, guiding principles, value statements? How are we doing on our strategic planning? How much time do we spend as a board on strategy versus the day-to-day operations? And should we be spending more time on strategy versus the day-to-day operations? Take a look at the book, Boards That Makes a Difference, Boards That Make a Difference. I know Miller spent a lot of time with this particular book. It's a good book, and it helps to really highlight exactly what we're talking about with the role of the board as visionary. And so where do we start? Job descriptions. Do we have a job description for a Door County board member? Do we have one? No. We've seen some counties start to develop a job description. Is it required? Absolutely not. Would it be helpful? You bet it would, because then you're setting expectations. When a person takes out papers to run for the Door County board, they know exactly what their job is going to be. So they come and they take a seat based upon that set of expectations that everybody agrees is what the Door County board supervisor's job is. So take a look at job descriptions. Take a look at those policies, like chain of command policies, policies for interacting with one another, policies for interacting with your administrator, policies for the information that's needed from staff in order for you to make an informed policy decision. And evaluations. If our most important job has two functions, number one, to adopt policy, number two, hold those accountable for carrying out the policy, then how much time are we spending on evaluations? What is the role of our standing committees or our committees of jurisdiction when it comes to evaluating department heads? What is the role of this board or any committee of the board in evaluating the administrator? Do we have a consistent and constant evaluation method for our administrator? Should we? I think you should. I think it's absolutely critical that you do. And how you do it is up to you. But begin the discussion of how do we best ensure that our administrator is carrying out our policy direction, and that we are holding our administrator accountable? Now, when it comes to the committees of jurisdiction or the standing committee's role in the evaluation of the department head, the policy direction that's given to the administrator and carried out by the department head is very important for that committee of jurisdiction, for that standing committee. So they have input in the evaluation as to how the policy direction is being carried out. When it comes to that department head's particular, I guess, adherence to county policy as it relates to tardies or absences of particular employees in that department, is that something that the committee should be involved in? Absolutely not. That's what the administrator's job is. That's what your personnel director's job is. That's, that's who focuses on that. But in terms of policy direction, that's where the committee can provide valuable insight to the administrator, who is primarily responsible for evaluating those employees. Yes, you had a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just was kind of wondering when you mentioned the evaluating of the administrator, how does some other counties do that?
I like to evaluate, number one, on an annual basis, so you have a set time for the evaluation, but then have it consistently throughout the year, because there's nothing worse than having a problem arise in January that isn't addressed until December. That's awful. That's awful from a personnel management standpoint. So I have some process in place so that when concerns are raised about performance, those concerns are directed somewhere for resolution. And then whenever you have the evaluation, you focus on what policy direction was given to the administrator this year. Perfect example is that you may tell the administrator, hey, you know what, I know we've got a budget, but we need to come in 1% under budget this year. That's a policy direction, come in 1% under budget. Now, do you wait until December 31st and say, how did we do? No. You take a look at the June financials, July, August, you look at those financials throughout the year and say, how are we doing? You track those. You give feedback to the administrator. The administrator can then explain concerns to you so that you have an opportunity to say, oh, boy, for us to come 1% under budget, we can't do it with the current policy direction that we're giving our administrators, we got to change our policy direction. Or you may have an administrator that says, I don't care about your policy direction 1%, 1% schment, I don't care. In which case you got a problem with your administrator, okay? So you have that constant evaluation process. In other words, it's not necessarily defining exactly what the evaluation looks like, but establishing a framework or a process for conducting that evaluation.
Are you later on going to go into any ways of dealing with open session, open and closed session?
I'm going to talk about that in the open meetings portion a little bit, yeah. Yes, sir? Another question?
I had the same question.
Same answer. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Excuse me once.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Let me ask that question in a different way. You had a chart up there a little bit ago about the, with the arrows directing the chain of command?
Uh huh.
And it goes down to the staff, doesn't come back to the county board members at all. And as Mr. Meyer pointed out, it should come back to us so that we hear what's going on.
Uh huh.
If, if it does come back to us only through the chain of command, how do we know, and this is, again, this is just so that we get some kind of understanding of how this works. How do we know that anybody we put in as an administrator or as an department head is doing a good job if we can't hear from the ones they oversee bringing forth a problem? Because if all they can do is go to, if a staff member can only go to the department head to say, hey, I've got a complaint about you, or the department head go to the administrator that, well, here's the problem we have, chance are we're not going to hear it, the administrator could get rid of the department head before that ever comes to our light. The old saying is, a company loses a lot of good men before it'll admit it made a mistake by putting a bad manager in there. Now, I'm not saying that's the case, okay? But that has bothered me from the day I got on county board. We've gone through three, three administrators. There's never been a way that we as a board find out, because we're not here eight hours a day, and we're, we're being told we're not supposed to be. I'm even questioning why we have committee meetings, given how this is being presented. But how do we know if we don't see or have, see the person in action or if we're not allowed to get feedback?
Well, I think, well, number one, committee meetings are very important. I don't know, hopefully you didn't take away from this that your job is irrelevant. Your job is incredibly relevant. I think that you need to focus on various things that are incredibly important. That's what the focus needs to be. But remember, this is a fluid situation. There are checks and balances in place. Let me give you an example. Door County has a grievance policy, all right? So that employees who are disciplined have the opportunity to seek redress for that discipline. And I've not looked at your policy, but I assume it goes through the administrator at some level. And if the administrator doesn't resolve, it goes to an impartial hearing officer. And if the impartial hearing officer doesn't resolve in a way that the employees is satisfied, it comes to the county board. Well, what's wrong with asking the administrator for a report on how many employee grievances have been filed? Asking how many complaints have been filed? And if you see in one particular department, we've got 47 complaints in one month, does that tell you that we got a personnel issue in that department that needs further exploration? Absolutely it does. And that's an example of a check and a balance where you can ask for measures, you can ask for information, get that information determined. Is there a problem that needs to be addressed? And that's just one example. Again, I think the discussion, I think that's a great question, and I think that question needs to be asked of your administrator and say, how can we ensure that all of these issues are being addressed in a way that we find consistent with our policy direction? That doesn't mean you step in and you manage, that just means that you're holding administration accountable for them managing. And that's, again, that's a perfect example of what a committee can do. A personnel committee can do that. Other points? Mr. Chair?
Our plan this morning was to go to lunch somewhere between 11:30ish and then reconvene at 12:30ish. Basically, you have to call when you want to take the break.
You know, we're getting to the point.
We'll be back at 12:30 quarter to one.
I wonder if I could go through roles and responsibilities, almost get there, and then we could take a break?
Just show you sort of the timeframe.
Sure. All right. Let's see if we can work through this a bit. So let's talk about some real-world examples. Committee member asks a department employee for a report on a particular personnel issue currently happening in the department. Should the employee comply? And if not, what should the employee do? Any volunteers? What do you do as a county board member? An employee within human services comes and says, you know, Joe's doing an awful job here of managing this particular issue. We need to get rid of this employee. What do you do?
Go to the administrator.
Go to the administrator?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So do you think that the human services employees know that any issue like that that's raised gets sent to the administrator? Do you think that your human services department head knows that any issue that's raised like that is going to the administrator? Do we have that codified somewhere? Is that a policy that we could take a look at in terms of chain of command? Example two. Committee recommends, and the full county board approves, a budget for the highway department, including line items for maintenance, equipment purchases, and improvements. Should the committee also specify the specific makes and models of the equipment the commissioner must purchase and/or specify the terms of the bid for the equipment?
No.
Absolutely not. And I hear that all the time. Oh, I'm really ticked off, we could have got a better deal on a Ford.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's, I mean, once we have a budget and we have it there and the appropriation is there, we delegate the authority for conducting the purchase to the highway commissioner within a specific policy direction that says we're going to get the lowest cost possible consistent with the bid specifications. Example three. A constituent complains to a county board member about a department employee. Should the supervisor intervene in this situation of someone, in what fashion?
Administrator.
Go through the administrator. Again, using the Rolodex, the Shepard model, make sure that you get that person to the right individual who can take care of this situation. Obviously, if it's a constituent, it's a big concern for you, because that's your connection. Your connection is with the constituent, but give them the opportunity to address it through the right people. Don't, don't take on the problem yourself. County board supervisor asks to shadow a department head for a day to learn how the department operates. Should the department head comply? What do you think? You're the highway commissioner, say, I want to spend a day in your shoes, I want to follow you around wherever you want to go, wherever you go. What do you think? Should the commissioner say, yeah, absolutely, come on? What if the entire committee asks at different times to shadow? I think shadowing's a great deal. I think shadowing is very important, and it ought to be part of a two-year cycle that you go through, not only for new members on the board, but for everybody on the board. But do it at regular intervals. If you just show up at the door and say, I'm going to shadow you today, that creates disruption and chaos. That's not going to work. But if you say, May 28th is going to be Shadow the Commissioner Day, and everybody and anybody who wants to can come out and learn about our highway department, I think that's a great opportunity to learn exactly what it is that our highway department does. Example five. A constituent contacts a county board member with concerns about the way she was treated by a particular social worker. Is it appropriate for the supervisor to contact the social worker just to find out what happened? Not to necessarily do anything, just to find out what happened?
No.
No, absolutely not. Go through the administrator, go through your human services director. Example six. County board adopts a policy requiring that all open positions be advertised through several media to ensure broad dissemination, as well that each advertisement contain language indicating the county is an equal opportunity employer. What happens if a department head fails to follow the policy?
Administrator.
Fire him.
I heard fire him. Who do you address this through?
Administrator.
Your administrator.
Right.
Who's responsible for ensuring that department heads follow this policy?
Administrator.
Your administrator is, absolutely. All right, now we're on to open meetings. So before I finish, any questions before we break for lunch? Mark?
Yeah, I got one. Let's say a constituent contacts you and says, I have a problem with one of your department heads, and my lawyer will be handling this from now on.
Administrator and the corporate counsel.
Administrator and corp counsel both, then?
Yeah, and I'm sure administrator would call corp counsel at that point as well. Ken?
Yeah, I think it was question two there, or example two about the highway, and other committees will do the same thing. We always get a report from our commissioner, when the bids go out to buy a piece of equipment, the commissioner brings that back to the committee. We go over them, and the committee decides with their input which vehicle or, or, or piece of equipment to buy. We make that decision. You know, their input, but we'll make, and we have at times overridden the commissioner and taken a different vehicle. Are you saying, when those bids come to the commissioner, the commissioner just makes a decision on their own and, and can just report back to us, here's what I chose to get and why, and our hands are, hands off?
Depends on your policy.
And not just for any committee.
If your policy is that the committee makes that call, then you're following policy by having the committee make that call. The only thing I'm questioning is whether it's worthy of a discussion to say, are we as a committee more qualified to make this decision than the commissioner would be? And I, I don't have a predetermined answer. I don't know.
And, and I said, with the, with the commissioner's input, and that's just one case, but I've been on, I'm on a lot of committees, we're all on various committees, we all do it. We have bids, we have projects going, we open the bids, and, and then the committee discusses it and makes a decision.
The reason this example is up here is I've been in plenty of committee meetings where they approve vouchers, and one of the approvals I was in actually was for copy paper. And so the committee was approving the purchase of copy paper, and I thought, what a tremendous waste of time. If you look back to that list on what can go wrong with time spent on trivial matters, if we have an appropriation out there for copy paper, why do we care what brand of copy paper it is, and why do we care about the invoice that was submitted for that copy paper? As long as it's still within the budgetary authority of that department head, we shouldn't care. Paperclips, I've seen that with paperclips as well. Let's not focus on trivial issues, but with what you're talking about with highway department, that's a little different. And so it depends on your particular county policy, and I think that's worthy of a discussion. Who should be involved in that decision-making process? Put the best and brightest in charge of that decision-making process and go with it. Yes, sir?
What about a policy that would advise staff to purchase local items when possible?
I think that's a great policy. Yeah, giving preference to local vendors, absolutely, that's a great policy. Yes?
Isn't it a good idea with that policy to have a, kind of a limited difference between the vendors?
Depends on how much weight you want to put on local vendors. I mean, it depends, it's entirely up to you as to how much preference you want to give to local vendors on that. You've seen a lot of debate in the last six months on these local living wage ordinances. Well, what are those designed to do? The board is adopting a policy that says on any project using our money, you have to pay, you know, $11 an hour, even though that's above the federal or state minimum wage. The board can have that type of policy. They think it's that important that they're going to spend extra money on their contract to ensure that those wages are paid. That's a policy decision.
But I mean, as, as county board members, we're trying to watch the taxpayers' money.
Uh huh.
So you want to get the best deal that you can.
Uh huh.
But you also want to sit there and give some credence to the local.
Uh huh.
And, but I mean, if he's way off just because he's local and we're going to give it to him, that's what I think by trying to do some kind of a limitation.
Well, if that's your, if that's your concern, yeah, you set a variation limit in there, 5% within 5% or whatever the case may be. Sure. Got a question back, yes? Yes?
Yeah, you talked a lot about policy procedures and responsibilities. Are somewhere along the line, are we going to get to this morale issue?
I'm not going to talk about morale, but I'd be happy to talk about it if you'd like to talk about it. I think that when it, morale is, morale is not a symptom, morale is a result. And so have you created an environment to create the best result? And to me, like I said before, a lot of what I see in counties is a product of just disagreement and discord, because people don't have a solid understanding of roles and responsibilities. If I come to work every day knowing what my role is, I may not be happy with it, but that's a personal choice by me. It's been clearly communicated to me what my role is and what my expectations are as an employee. That's fair. And so I think that type of environment is going to create a better result, higher morale, than a situation where I come in and not knowing which boss I'm going to report to today, if a county board member is going to jump down my back for a particular thing, if this department over here is going to jump down my back, if this employee. That creates a chaotic environment with no clear delineation of roles and responsibilities, which leads to lower morale. And so to me, it's, and I'm making it very, very simple, and it's not this simple, but I'm making it very simple, where we start with the foundation, and that is a clear understanding of roles and responsibilities. That's where I think you have to start. Yes, sir?
If you're through with this part of your program, then I would like to ask the county board chair what time we should be back from lunch.
In your seats at 5:00 to 1:00.
You've got an hour.
We have another question?
I hate to cut in on his lunchtime. I guess I had, I had two issues. I've had the opportunity to be on both sides, being staff and being on county board. And I think, in contrast to some of your perceptions there, which were on the board, and what staff in the back said, micromanagement, I think what I've observed, and it still continues, it's, the committees take ownership along with their department heads. You sort of do quite a bit of bonding, and you come up with the idea and you try to move it forward, but the micromanagement takes more into effect in other committees that don't deal with you 12 months out of the year.
Mm-hmm.
When you, when you bring your idea forward, they think totally opposite of what we're trying to bring forward. So I think it's not so much that we're not listening to staff, it's just we're having a hard time convincing other committees that our issues are valid.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one was when you said we had the walking quorum, where you see us pass a budget on 21 to zip in a matter of 15 minutes. I give a lot of credit to our department, the administrator, our finance department. They come back to finance, they come back to the various committees and tell each one of them, this is what we have to work with, you make it work. So by the time it gets to us, if we're going to micro and cut that back again, we're starting